Here we are in Saraville, New Jersey at a special council meeting. Back with Bongholio.
All time low, bro.
And Lefty Grimes.
And that's what he said too, the.
Sativa crosses here.
Kennedy O'Brien's political game is at an all time low. We're gonna call him out on it. Yeah, the article that my central Jersey wrote said that he didn't want to create a platform for political theater for dopey assholes with no lives. That's actually what he said. That's why they changed the time limit from five to three.
And he was speaking about the residents, not us, because none of us had yet attended the meetings.
Hadn't been to a meeting since he had been the mayor again, since January. Yeah, correct. Oh, fuck. I got a shirt.
Want you to grab them?
I'm not wearing liquid church here.
Nothing. I don't want them. I don't want them. No, I don't want them.
Alright, I'll see you out there. Excuse me.
Church, church.
How does that work? Hi guys, done?
Hey, how are you guys doing?
I'm identifying myself. I didn't come into the building in a nefarious. I am identified. Yes.
Oh, my crazy. My one twin got off this morning and walked past me and I said, whoa. I could feel the heat radiating off of his body. So his father got down to the sun. It's 102.7. Now he got dressed for school. You know, this time of year.
Yeah.
We're here to support the Save Our Firehouse today. Last time we were here, the agenda looked like a lot more than that. That's why I'm actually surprised. Yeah, there was a lot of ordinances. Should I turn it on now?
I'm gonna come back up. I forgot my harmonica over there.
Alright. How you doing, boss?
Good.
Sergeant, is the clerk's office still open?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Uh, yeah, cuz it's it's late. It's alright. I'll request them to email.
I don't believe so.
I think they called. What's business hours? Like 3, 4 o'clock?
I think 4, 4 o'clock. The sign's actually.
How you doing, boss?
How you making it up?
Good.
How about you?
Nice to see you, boss. You were here last time, right?
No, no.
Oh, no?
No, I wasn't. It's a mustache, I guess.
Yeah. What's up, boss?
Hey, buddy.
Hey. Oh, so.
We're here in Saraville. You're on? Yeah, we're here in Saraville. We're gonna try to talk to the mayor about getting Zoom access back, but the first problem is getting in there and speaking because they don't want us to speak because we have masks on and we want to identify ourselves.
Hi, sir.
So here we go again, part two. Here we go, Saraville, take two. Is that the new borough attorney? They get a new borough attorney every week here.
It could be.
I felt bad for the last one because they gave her an unconstitutional order. They gave her an unconstitutional order. And I think she was gonna go through with it.
I think so too.
She must've missed that day in law school. She missed class that day. When they talked about the First Amendment and the Constitution and a lot of bad orders.
How you doing, mayor?
You a little patient?
Yeah, just now as you get older. Thank you.
You want me to turn you on?
Yeah. Too early.
Bongholio has been equipped with a body worn camera. I wanna show you my bags this way. You know, various activities. Yeah, all my camera equipment and then. Thank you, boss.
Is it public works?
Yeah, she's public.
No, it's what we say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four, three of them.
John is.
Hey, Mikey, you got the agenda? What does the back say? Is it public comments on the resolutions?
Hey, look, there's written on the back.
On both of them?
Yeah.
We can't even speak on the resolutions. It's just the three minute limitation. What they call three, they even admit it's a limitation. Yeah, but normally you can speak on both resolutions and get your public comments in. Not today. Right out the door?
Right out the door we can speak.
I'm not sure. It might be different cuz it's a special meeting. We'll see. We'll see. Let's go there. Yeah, we only get our three minute limitation. At the council meeting, we could've spoke on resolutions and the public, the three minute limitation. But. Another, second meeting in a row, Christian Onuha hasn't shown up. No show Christian Onuha is what I like to call him. No show Christian Onuha. Who's the attorney today, Mayor Mensch? Nice to see you, brother.
How you doing?
Did you see I beat Burrell Patel in the ethics complaint? Good job, right? I did a good job on that one. Hell, yeah. Hell, yeah. Hey, Mikey, he's also the attorney for Edison B O E. Yeah. Yeah. One win. You're wearing a nice suit. Beautiful suit, Mayor Mensch.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
God bless us.
Yeah. God bless everybody. God bless America.
There's the church bells.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jesus.
Mayor Mensch has stepped out of the room. He stepped out of the room real quick. Yeah, I recently defeated Edison Board of Education member Burrell Patel in an ethics complaint. School Ethics Commission is gonna reprimand him soon, thanks to Deputy Attorney General David Kaliski. New Jersey ramps up on corruption very hard these days. Very hard. State of New Jersey. Mikey, I made a complaint with the O P I A for the last meeting. Yeah, because he bullied me, said I had to identify myself in the hallway. An uneducated lawyer tried to tell me I have to identify myself. It's not even time to speak yet. And even if it was my time to speak yet, I still don't have to identify myself. Nobody has to forfeit their Fourth Amendment in order to exercise their.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Will everyone stand for a shirt fairness or a door? Almighty God grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation and may he watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, infinite, just as it is.
Statement of publication?
This special meeting has been noticed in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Thapka.
Here.
Kaliski. Anoha. Roberts.
Here.
Zanarski.
Here.
Zabrowski.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public portion on resolutions. Are there any comments on the resolutions? There being no comments, I'm just gonna motion.
And I think the clear store does too, right? You have a comment? Yeah, you can go first.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Thank you.
You have three minutes on the resolution.
Thank you.
Say your name and address for the record, please.
Fourth Amendment, I wish not to recognize, not to say my name. May I continue? Thank you. Jersey Watcher YouTube channel broadcasting interdimensionally. Thank you. I'm against the number of these resolutions. I'm against 2024-242. I'm against 2024-243. I'm against 2024-230. None of these, none of these bills, I don't think should be approved. 2024-231, I'm against completely. Completely against almost a million dollars for this CAD system. What's wrong with the CAD system that you already have? Is your CAD system not working? Okay. Maybe I wanna speak, speak then. The firearm holsters, I'm against $72,000 on the firearm holster, holsters. I'm against that completely. Do the officers right now not have any holsters? Is that the holster for their service weapon? Is that what we're talking about? $72,000? How many? How many does one of those cost? Does anyone know how much one of those firearm holsters cost? $72,000 is quite extensive, you know? Anyone know? 2024-240, that's my time? That was my time? Sorry.
Are there any other questions? If there are no other questions. Any comments?
Nothing.
Okay, no comments. I want to attend a motion to close the public portion.
Make a motion to close the public portion and to prove the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
Sir, second? Second. Roll call.
Councilperson Roberts.
Yes.
Thapka.
Resolution 254230, I'm gonna abstain on the Adalox bill. Yes, on all areas.
Zanarski.
Yes. Okay, this time I'm gonna open the public portion for comments on any issues, Vince.
Reminder, it's a three minute comment, and it's comments on, back and forth.
Vince Canti, for Yuckshite Place.
Hold on one second. Sorry. Give him one second. Sorry.
So thank you for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I wanted to express some concern and some disappointment for what I've seen going on. And, you know, I'm out and about a lot. I talk with a lot of people, see a lot of people, have a lot of discussions, and much of it is the same. The sentiment is the same. I just don't understand, because you guys don't, up here, you don't really talk with anybody on the record. You don't answer any questions, you don't engage with anybody, so it's kinda hard to understand, and it seems like there's ulterior motives to a lot of the things that are going on. And I don't understand the position that you've all taken on the firehouse in the town hall, in the town hall. 1909 establishment, it's been part of our history. It's next door. It's the heart of Main Street. And you guys have this notion of tearing it down and putting in either housing or strip wall. Is that really what you want this council's legacy to be? That you tear down a part of our history here in Saraville and you put in housing or strip wall over there? I don't understand. I'm not really sure what is going on as to why that's happened. You know, people say to me, oh, well, what about the funding for, this guy right here is a pro on giving grant funding. We've got politicians in Middlesex County that'll line up to help us with grant funding. So if you told us about grant, it's about funding to do that, it's a bogus response. I'm concerned about the ulterior motives behind that. The second thing is, I'm talking fast. I got a minute and a half. Zack, the chief of staff. You guys should all be ashamed of yourselves to hire this guy. He doesn't even live in town. Lives eight miles away from here. Can you hire him to be chief of staff for the mayor? And you went one step further. You made a deputy director of Sarah? Now, you guys might not have done it, but you welcomed him into Saraville in that capacity. What's wrong with the town, what's wrong with the people in Saraville? You can't give somebody in Saraville that job paying $67,000? You gotta give it to somebody who already live here? If you're turning your back on the residents of this town and you're doing stuff like that, deputy director of Sarah, of Sarah, you have it in a town. And he's gonna be part of the crew that decides redevelopment? He's gonna be part of that team? It's shady. I don't like it. A lot of people, once that starts to get around, a lot of people won't like it. It seems like you're paying somebody back for a favor. I know, I know Zack was involved in the political campaign as well. It just seems like there's a connection there. You're paying back somebody for a favor that they might have done. And it doesn't sit well. Doesn't sit well with the residents. You know, that upsets me and upsets a lot of people. So that's really all I wanna say. I got three seconds, so I did it in the time. So thank you.
Zack Meshkov? Zack Meshkov?
Do you wanna come up?
Uh, no. Zack, or something like that. I don't have to say it, right?
Frank Cruzino, 32 Canal Street, Mikeham. Early in 2023, the Saraville Historical Society submitted nomination preservation of Jersey to nominate the firehouse next door for the top 10 most endangered buildings. That's the yearly function we have. June 4th, 2023, we were invited to attend the announcement of the top 10 Sandy Hook. The old firehouse was selected. We were filled with, right now, filled with tears and joys, just reading that, and we were excited. We could not wait to share the news with our residents, our members, and the council. July 20, 2023, Saraville Historical Society made a presentation in council announcing our successful nomination in hopes of support and helping hand the designation of the firehouse as a local historic landmark and restoration of this historic icon. During the following weeks, we were divided and nothing was going to happen due to silly season. And no decision or help could be available until after Election Day and January 1st. We eventually, during the most hard January 1st, we met as a society to discuss our approach with our president and Jersey advocate. We formulated a plan, which later on was submitted to council as per request. After election, we contacted the council's elected folks, and all were in favor of restoration and revitalization of the old firehouse. Another presentation was in order, but it was suggested we wait till February due to the agenda long jam. We understood that. February 12th, council meeting, enthusiastically mentioned our president, New Jersey nomination to council as top 10 most endangered list, and we sought council's help and guidance to keep the momentum going, to save our first town hall firehouse that was built in 1909 and revitalize her for a new life. We sought local historic designation. The march was voted out by council. Went to the ballot, which is coming up, and we were not passed, or there was no designation on the ballot. That building belongs to the people. It's not the same. The land was donated by Fisher family in 1908. We have copies of the deed. It must have made a storied Saraville monument to all those who built her, worked inside her, and volunteered to help build our heritage and protect our town. Some occupants of that building were Girl Scouts, AM Operator Club, ROTC, Coast Guard, classroom, and in the future, could be anything, the town and the community would like to have it, have it be, make it work again, with revitalizing it. It's an opportunity to look good in the eyes of the whole town.
You got it. You got it. Thank you.
No, I can see. Happy birthday, friend. Arthur Eaton House, 33 Delacat Lane, Saraville, New Jersey, trustee, Saraville Historical Society. Couple of things I want to point out, which I think most of the council and the mayor are unaware of. Open space. Everybody talks about an open space fund. The open space fund is open space, foreman preservation, and historic preservation. There's $9.1 million in there. We're not asking for that. But if push came to shove, that money is there. And it's already been collected from the taxpayers. The master plan, which probably most of you aren't aware of, including persons who serve on the planning board. On October 1st, they adopted portions to the master plan. One of those portions was, because of all the historic sites that have disappeared in town, the 1909 Town Hall Firehouse should be restored. That's now in the master plan. The other thing is, mayor, council people have been invited to come and listen to the facts, not misinformation that unfortunately, Mary, you can send it out. Nobody has come to any of our meetings except Councilman Thapka and Councilman Place. Other than that, nobody's come. When they surveyed. When they surveyed the building, when we paid all that money, which could have been paid for by grants, nobody wore masks in there if that building is so unsafe. Not the people who are the experts, none of them wore masks going into that building. So, obviously, the building must not be that unsafe to go in. You know, this didn't need to be done. I approached Councilwoman Roberts over a month ago, and asked the meeting be set up with the mayor, one other councilperson, and three members of the historical society. And I was told, Mayor, you turn that down till after the election. This could have stopped a lot of the dissension that has happened and is going on in this town. The response we're getting is, the people want the firehouse. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor Novak wants to drive. I come up here almost every meeting, and I'm always very respectful. If I disagree with the vote you've taken, I tell you, I tell you why. I don't make any accusations about why you took a particular vote. And then, if I see that you're really doing something I love, I tell you about it, and I thank you for it. I've been taking crap from members of my own party because I'm too nice when I come up here. But after all of that, I read an article, the Sinarsky Inc., the plan, end democratic corruption that has plagued our town. Well, there's no Democrats up there, so you can only be talking about Vince and I trying to get back up on here. I've never tended to dawing from anybody. I've never had a six-figure political job. I just do my job and go home. I didn't, I have never had a super pact full of dark money that's supposed to be totally separate from the political campaign. And you can say that even though, see, all of the propaganda that was sent around at election time, whether it was paid for by Republican, the local Republicans, or this pact, all were dead ago. You can say, well, that was just a coincidence, maybe they will not go there. But when you hire somebody, the chairman of that pact, who lives eighty miles away for a job in this town, he's being called chief of staff, but we have a borough ordinance that says that the business administrator is the chief of staff. And I, I did check, he's being paid under a title of clerk, so he's not being paid under. But we also have an ordinance that requires you live in town. Now, I'm sorry to see the chief's not here tonight because he was one of the people that, about two weeks after I was elected, we had a meeting in his office with himself and his chief of staff begging to go back to residency, which, within ten months, I had all of the paperwork in order to go back to residency. And yet, one of the first people we hire, we create a position, and then we hire another county. And then, after the council voted to remove a volunteer from Sayerville who lived in this town his whole life and just recently moved out, we had to remove him because nobody should be on Sayerville that doesn't live in this town. And now, for an additional almost twenty thousand dollars, we hired the same gentleman that doesn't live in town to be the deputy director. And I'm just, I've used this quote one, once time before, and I'm gonna use it again, it was made by Thomas Pegg. "A body of men holding themselves accountable to nobody or not to be trusted by anybody." Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, Mayor, fellow trustee. I sat here last year, and I heard this government budget recheck pilot. In twenty twenty-four, one of the first things you did, Mayor, along with your team, you approved that pilot. That pilot is projected to cost the Sayerville taxpayers a hundred million dollars over its life. That's a hundred million dollars, not ten million, fifty million, it's a hundred million dollars. I ask anybody, if you gave somebody a hundred million dollars, what do you think they might do for you? And we talk about the team here, Mayor O'Brien's team, I think you should be called the hundred million dollar tax giveaway team. And you know, when they passed that, when they passed that pilot, we had a bunch of lapdogs here. They weren't lapdogs, they were silent. But low and behold, now when we talk about the historical society, only wants a designation for the building next door, they didn't ask for any money. You come up with a phony idea that you need to put a referendum on a ballot and a phony three million dollars, and all of a sudden, these, these lapdogs for the hundred million dollars, they became watchdogs now for the borough. Councilman Sinarsky thought, oh, I can't spend three million dollars, and he didn't say, fool, when it was a hundred million dollars, did he? It sounds, from what I've heard before and what we're talking about now, there's a lot of bolder for developers and their friends and the windfall they're gonna get here. You know, in nineteen eighty-eight, Ronald Reagan at a summit was asked, what's the strategy on a cold war? And he said, it's simple, we win, they lose. I kind of think that's the strategy here to the borough, for Mayor O'Brien and his lapdogs. Yeah, we win, and the taxpayers of Sayerville lose. I think that's their strategy, they're showing it meeting after meeting. And let me tell you something, Mayor, you're no Ronald Reagan. You're not even Ronald McDonald. Thank you.
Any other questions? All the questions, go ahead.
Oh, me? Who?
You gonna go?
Yeah, 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 why not? Am I recognized?
Could you speak on the, on the resolution?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. You're probably wondering why I'm here, Mr. Mayor. The reason I'm here, because I read a newspaper article. Mayor calls residents dopey assholes with no lives, and then you start stealing the public speaking time. From, from what I read, you guys, in, in your new ordinance, you give two minutes later on, if the mayor allows it, that looks like viewpoint discrimination. And if you refuse one resident, they can't speak but allow someone else because they start kissing your ass, you're, you're gonna face a lawsuit. So, the people who voted, voted for that, you know, good job, good job. There's many reasons for people to come and attend these meetings. Recently, a councilwoman was killed. It could, could be because of the political corruption. The Polando, the Democratic Party mafia boss, and everything having to do with the strip club and all the bribes he took. And we're starting to hear, Zonin could have shut them down, never shut them down. A lot of corruption going on in Sayerville. So, when you start going in the newspaper, calling your own residents dopey assholes with no lives, and then you start stealing their public speaking time, you know, do you have some kind of guilty conscience? Is it, do you not want residents to come in here and ask questions with all, all the recent scandals going on, Mayor O'Brien? And when I was outside in the public lobby, you bullied me, told me, I don't have to identify myself to you. In the state of New Jersey, I don't have to identify myself unless I commit a crime. And I don't understand why the last attorney was trying to tell me, when we come up here, we have to identify ourselves. No, we don't. The open public meetings act says, when the public's time to speak, let them speak. At, at the same time, Daniels law, if someone comes up here and they're a covered person under Daniels law, and you broadcast, you broadcast their address, this township could be liable for putting that person's life at risk because you're bullying somebody. You're trying to violate someone's Fourth Amendment right just so they can express their First Amendment right. And Mayor O'Brien, you're supposed to be a Republican, you're supposed to, you know, I, I don't understand what I'm seeing here in Sayerville. Absolutely disgusting. Do you want to apologize for how we were treated? Are you aware that COVID's on the rise again, there's all these new variants, and, and no one up there's wearing a mask? But you wanna bully me for wearing a mask? We're trying to flatten the curve? Governor Murphy says we gotta flatten the curve? Okay.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm El Rampador. I have my hand up. Had my hand up since August, since I was at this meeting. I went to a Zoom meeting, and they said that Kennedy O'Brien took away Zoom access for the disabled vets. I said, no. I said, there's Zoom access, I'm gonna go to the meeting tonight, I'm gonna have a Zoom meeting. And I'm gonna raise, lower my hand now. But this woman here in the black was playing patty cake with me. Literally, I raised my hand, and she would lower my hand. I would raise my hand, and she would lower my hand. I would raise my hand, and she would lower my hand. For twenty minutes, she did this. She had the energy to take away my First Amendment right, when it would take less energy to let me speak and enjoy my First Amendment rights. So, this woman, I don't know her name, but she's gonna be named in my tour claim as well as the rest of you, because you took away my First Amendment rights. You took away rights for the disabled. Now, what's funny is, you'll use disabled vets, you use vets for political theater, but you take their, disabled vets' access away. And from what I understand, you have a disabled son, and which really, I'm, I'm wondering what the disconnect is, because you took away rights for your disabled son to take part in your meeting. Now, if your son is verbal, I don't know if he's verbal, and if he's verbal, when he go home tonight, he should tell you, pops, you took disabled rights or human rights? Pops, disabled rights or human rights? Tell him disability rights or human rights. You should know that. Sixty-eight percent of Jesus's miracles were for the disabled. Where is your energy at? Where is your energy for the disabled? There's a disconnect here, and I wanna know what it is, because I fight for disabled people, I fight for disabled vets. You use them for political theater. I saw it, I was disgusted by that. You took away Zoom access. For nineteen months, you gave disabled vets Zoom access. Disabled vets have been asking for, for access for years, for church, online school, online council, and they gave it to us for nineteen months, you gave all of it to cancer patients, the MS patients, you gave us disabled access. And then you took it away. You took it away. You. We had it under the last mayor, but you took it away. Why was it taken away? Why was, why was disability rights taken away? Your own son can't take part in these meetings, and it's caregiver. How dare you? I'm fighting for your son. And people like him, and disabled vets, and people that are in a deathbed that can't take part. Ephesians six twelve says, we are now to struggle against blood and flesh, but against the authorities, against the rulers of this dark world. And that's you! That is you! Absolutely disgusting display of Christianity and compassion for the disabled. I don't know who you're praying to. But it sure ain't Jesus.
Are there any other questions? Yes. Any, any other comments?
Hey, gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, council. I just wanna say, I'm remaining anonymous, that's what I did the last four times I came to Sayerville. Each time, it was a different part of attorney, for whatever reason, I don't know. I'm not so sure why last time it was gonna be any kind of an issue. The reason why, when you go to Trenton, it's, it's optional, because the state doesn't wanna play those games. We have freedom of speech in this country, Mr. Mayor. People fought for those freedoms, and you can't force someone's speech by making them tell you their personal sensitive information about who they are and where they're from. That's not the way any of this works. You might run the meeting, but you don't run anyone's life. So, this song is called the Anonymous Anthem.
And I never give my name, and I never give my address. I don't want to be dealing with the madness, but we believe on the power of time and I can run, does it even miss? Want to see a racist system? I'm just here to drop bombs and shoot missiles, and correct government officials. I'll be taking names, ready to change. What the heck am I gonna write me a couple of checks if they got any serious? Or I'm delirious, you're the ones who's acting out of fear. Which is me, we don't know. Put me down as good citizen, or put me down as John Doe. You don't give my name, you don't give my address, you don't need to know any of my status. I dare you, bro, and no try. All the time government trying to take what's mine, can you make sense of this? I've been simply missing personal sensitive, and I'm never gonna exchange the force to exercise my First Amendment. And I never give my name, and I never give my address. And that's the way it will remain. I never give my name, and I never give my address. That's the way it's gonna be. Every time that I speak.
Are there any other comments? Any other comments? I want to attend a motion.
Rebuttal, rebuttal comments.
May I close the public?
Rebuttal, two-minute rebuttal comments.
It's in Sayerville. It doesn't work like that. Is there a second? Second. Roll call.
Aye.
This time, I'll take a motion to close the meeting. Is there?
I made a motion to close the meeting.
Is there a second? Second. Roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Kennedy O'Brien, Mayor Kennedy O'Brien, subscribe Jersey Watcher YouTube channel, New Jersey Transparency. Okay. Have a nice day, brother. I might run for Middlesex County Sheriff. Vote for me. Vote Christopher Sheriff, all right, brother? Defund, defund the police as quick as possible. I, I, no one's, no one's trying to be a tough guy.
Mayor says it's who?
No, he called, he called me tough guy. Oh.
Terrible.
Hi, Ken.
How you doing, boy? Take care. Take care, man. That's harmless.
Yeah, that was harmless. Have a, have a good day, Councilman. Think, stop passing unconstitutional ordinances. Two minutes shouldn't be optional, depending on if you kiss the mayor's ass or not.
You said that's not how it works, though. But it's not a reasonable point, and if everybody's speaking, when, when do they make that decision, in time or not?
Oh, sorry. Oh, that's, that's the woman, that's, that's the woman who kept on using for us.
Oh, the mayor just wanna say, you guys, you guys are so awesome, especially me, the gentleman in the pit, though, just like you guys are so awesome, just making stuff, and you guys are, you're gonna hold them, we're gonna take us on fire, and crash them someday.
Have a good day, ladies. Have a good day, BA. Have a good day. Stop passing unconstitutional ordinances. The extra two minutes shouldn't, shouldn't come at the mayor's. Have a good day, oh, Mayor Kennedy O'Brien.
Mayor Palmer suspended the chief, who was no good. So, so it was nice to see Chief Dan, man, coming out and supporting.
Have a good day, Sergeant.
He was thankful for it, but I love Chief Dan. Just telling how much I love Chief Dan.
They said, they said that was my first harmonica solo I ever.
We're here to save the firehouse.
You know, it's not meant to discourage, it's meant to...
I'll see, I'll see you, Mayor Mench.
Have a good one. Take care, guys. Have a good night. It's not meant to get us bad at all.
So, so he's the mayor of Bridgewater? Mayor Bridgewater, and he's also the Edison Board of Education Attorney.
Thank you. Tom is the mayor of Bridgewater, too?
Yeah, he's the mayor of Bridgewater, too.
Guys, my best, please.
Okay.
Have a good night, officers.
You too. Take care. Where's Lefty? Where's Lefty?
I noticed that you're one of the good guys, Paul, of the county. I see this. We watch. Yeah, no, I know. I, I, no, it's okay. I understand. As long as you guys, you know, we, yeah, you're not. That's, that's the thing. You stand out, and not so much as you can say yes and stuff. So, I just want to say, I mean, you, you critical, think critically instead of just voting for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman, that, that new ordinance is unconstitutional because it's at the mayor's whim, who, who gets that extra two minutes. And we know he's, if he think, if he perceives someone to be dopey, which is a perception, First Amendment, First Amendment's afforded to all Americans, not just those, the mayor deems to be dopey or not dopey. But have a nice day, Councilman. Have a good night. Have a good night. Yeah, he's the mayor of Bridgewater where they...
Are you serious? How'd you find that out?
No, because, because I know, he's, I should have started off with that first. Yeah, yeah. We had, we, so we had two mayors. The, the, the law firm is Mayor Bridgewater, and Mayor Kennedy O'Brien. Mayor Kennedy O'Brien, I'm the former Middlesex County Young Republican Chairman. I caught some, I, I recorded the catch of some child predators at the Circle Motel. Should I email that to your email, and, and maybe you can take a look at that, at it? Did you ever see the video at the Circle Motel? Have a good day, Mayor. God bless you. Oh, yeah? Have a good day, BA. It's, it's not, it's not polite to yell at members of the media that they're speaking to their camera, doing their First Amendment protected activity, BA. Hey, BA, did you ever see the Serrville video at the Circle Motel? I recorded those, those predators getting caught. You ever see it? You, you see the video?
No.
What's your name? I'll email it to you.
I appreciate it. I don't have an email.
Name and badge number?
Becker one forty-two.
Is, an email will be sent to you. All police officers have emails. They can't, they can't, that, that can't be. You seriously don't have an email as a police officer?
I don't give out my private email. If you want to send...
No, not a private email, your police officer email.
L. Becker, or L. Beck at Serrville, actually.
L. Beck at Serrville?
Yep.
L. Beck at Serrville. All right. Is that like Gmail dot com or something?
Dot com. L. Beck at Serrville dot com.
L. Beck at Serrville dot com. I'll send you an email. The, the, I recorded two predators. They were waiting for a fifteen-year-old that, over at the Circle Motel. You know where the Circle Motel is?
I do, sir.
Yeah? Hell, yeah. All right, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. My ride's waiting for me. I'll see, I'll see you, boss. I'll see you, boss. They can get in a lot of trouble if they, if they record someone that's a covered person that, under Daniels law, because, because they're broadcast. At the same time, that's exactly what the law says, that you're not allowed to broadcast such...
I understand.
You, you can't, you can't broadcast it. So, the moment that they're broadcasting with their Serrville TV website, that, that's a violation of the law. And if someone gets hurt, if someone gets hurt because they broadcasted such information, they could be held liable. And last time, they, they got mad at me because I said Daniels law. I never said I was a covered person under Daniels law. I said, "Hey, if they don't have to give their name and address, I'm going to remain anonymous, too." That's, that's basically the point I was trying to make, but, you know. I'll see, I'll see you, boss, all right? I'll see you, boss. I'll, I'll see you, Lefty. Great night.
Thank you.
Great night. We'll be back. See, it wasn't so hard to let us speak.
No, it was easy, painless.
It was easy, painless.
Totally painless.
Totally painless.
They didn't have to make a big deal out of that.
Are you still?
I think I'm still recording. I never hit it, so it should be. We unbonged and unhinged tour.
I love that it was the guy. I love that it was the blue.
Save the firehouse! What the hell is it not shutting off? Don't erase our history, finally.